Board of Commissioners Work Session, May 10, 2023. First up is National Safety Boarding Week, James Munk.
There we go. Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman and the Commission for a few minutes this morning. I'm James Munker. I am with the Ross Common Lotto of the United States Coast Guard Auxiliary. And every year, the Coast Guard and the Auxiliary, along with its partner, the National Safe Boaty Council, sponsors recognizes a week every year for National Boat Safety Week. And this emphasizes the importance of all kinds of boating safety activities, but particularly those involving wearing life jackets or personal flotation devices, as they're called. Every year, about 650 people drowned in the United States in lakes. A hundred of those or about 15% of them drowned in Michigan. And a vast majority of those could be saved if they weren't a life jacket. In Michigan, under state law, a child under six must wear the life jacket when they're on the boat. Beyond that, what we're required is to have the life jackets on the boat for each. But we strongly encourage people to wear them. If people had them on, if something happens, it generally happens very quickly unexpectedly, and having time to get to the life jacket can be critical. Wearing it all the time, once you get used to it, it's not all that bad. There's some of them that are inflatable, that aren't that heavy, that are much more comfortable than some of the others. So we do encourage people to wear those all the time. The flotilla is trying to get back up. Covid shut us down a good bit, like other organizations. This year, we're trying to get everything back up again. We're doing more, hopefully more investment inspections, voluntary inspections of private boats. I've got several boat ramps this year to do those where they can contact us individually. We do have one boating safety class already scheduled. That's for May 20th. And that one is already full much. Hopefully going to do one or two more. And the Ross Common Community Foundation grant funding for that. That's major. It's easier to do for us rather than having to charge for those. So we appreciate that, that effort. But we have been doing a lot of other things. If you go to any of the in our boat launches and some of the private ones, these. We were out about a couple of weeks ago and they've posted these signs up just again, trying to remind folks to wear your life jackets. It's so important. I really do appreciate the Commission recognizing this effort, passing the resolution. Any questions?
Thank you very much, and I appreciate everything you do.
I really appreciate what you guys sent for us, by the way.
Thank you. That's one thing people don't recognize. The Auxiliary is a totally volunteer force. There's about 20,000 of us in the country across. We are totally volunteer. We do not get paid for our efforts. And we do everything that active duty does. No exceptions.
Once again, thank you. You do a lot of work for the county. Number two, oral 29 tax rate request, Jamie Housman.
Good morning, honorable members of the Board of Commissioners, Roscommon County. I'm Jamie Housman, your Equalization Director. I was in front of you about a month ago. I rushed through a second report for you, this 4029, without waiting for the state to release what they wanted. This was a unprecedented year in which we hit the first time ever the 5% cap through Proposal A. As such, the point 079 should have been used as a rollback multiplier under the Headley Amendment. That was not done when I was here a month ago. As such, the motions that we had asked you to do two weeks ago were hold. And I am back with you again today. So this L 4029 tax rate request that's in front of you is for the summer tax levy for 2023 for Roscommon. It's in your packet. I normally hand them out. Um, because of the error, we were, we had plenty of time to get it to your packet. As you know, this is a statement of transparency. This 2023 tax rate request for the County of Roscommon shall levy against the 2023 taxable value of $1,642,230,090. Only item listed on this is your general fund as it will go on to the summer tax billings. As you will see, there is no rollback, and that is due to that 079 multiplier in use for inflation rate, which is the 5%. And so with that, no one in Michigan, I believe, has a rollback this year. So we are not special or different than. With that, there is a 3.5194 allocated mileage that you, that you should levy. This, this is how you will get your general fund. This form was compiled under the provisions of MCL 211.24E, which is truth in taxation, MCL 211.34, which is truth in capitalization, and plusing MCL 211.34D, which is the Headley Amendment, along with MCL 211.37 apportionment. Any questions for me?
Not interested.
Thank you.
To anybody else.
So at this point, I would respectfully request that the following motion be adopted at your May 24, 2023 regular board meeting. Motion to levy the following ad valorem tax rate for Roscommon County for 2023 summer tax roll, General Fund 3.5194. A second motion authorizing David Russo as your chairman and Michelle Stevenson to sign the L 4024 tax rate request for Roscommon.
Thank you.
Good morning. I wanted to come before the Board of Commissioners in regards to the American Rescue Plan application that was funded for. Our original application was for $25,000, asking for funding for consulting and professional services as well as some marketing. It has come to light that there is a Brownfield Conference that is a national conference that's coming up here this summer in Detroit. And so there are some board members that would like to attend that. The Brownfield Redevelopment Authority currently does not have a budget. We haven't had a project to kick off to make kind of that hopper of funding. So what I'm asking the Board of Commissioners is to broaden the scope of that original grant application, who include conference and training in addition to the professional services. Um, so I know that for many of you, this was before your tenure here as a Board of Commissioner. So I'm hoping that fits into the guidelines, American Rescue funding, and that we can broaden the scope and utilize some of these dollars for training and. Questions about the previous award? For those of you that were on the board?
If it falls within the scope, which I'm sure it does, I fully support it. I've been on that. Let's follow the scope. Motion forward to the.
Okay, perfect. You're welcome.
You're on for number four.
Right. Yes. So in your packet, we have information for a couple renewals for our EDC committee. If Al Cambridge, Al has been a valued member of the EDC Board for many years. So he's up for renewal as well as Pam Kincaid. And then in addition, we have a new board member, Tammy Frisbee. She's from the Michigan Community Health Services. She's going to be replacing Jim Raski. He's going to be retiring, but would be up for a new term. Oh, two renewals and one replacement slash.
How long is their term going to be?
Three-year term.
Three years. Okay.
Once again, I enthusiastically endorse those.
Thank you. And you're going to have something for us in two weeks. Thank you very much. Number five, Roscommon County Airport update, Eric.
Good morning. You're going to give me the whole 45 minutes?
Not. Zalbi 60. I know. Make sure your mic's on there.
Just a quick update on the airport happenings. The most recent federal project, federal state local project, which is the rehabilitation of the terminal apron, as it's called. It's the ramp area on the airport side of the terminal for parking and for transient aircraft, exiting aircraft to and from the hangars. That's where our fuel farm is. It was rehabilitated last fall. Last Thursday, they came out and they did the final paint markings. They did paint market last fall. They had to come out this spring to do that, finish the paint markings. Silt fence is still there because we're waiting for the shoulders to, for that turf to really start to fill in. Oh, there's probably another month or two before that silt fence gets removed. And then, you know, the closeout process of the project can take place at that time. Remember, our share for any federal project on the airport is 5%. Okay, the AP is 95 or 90%. The state pays 5, and we, the county, pay 5%. So our share of that project is roughly $22,000. We won't know the final counting until the project starts its closeout phase. On the next federal project we have this year will be the design or the runway lighting rehabilitation. The lighting out there is very old. The circuit is old and tired. So we're going to rehab runway lighting, runway and identifier lights, which are strobe lights, and also what we call a PAPs, precision approach path indicators, which help guide the pilot down on the correct glide. So not sure what the cost of that is yet, but the, the design piece of it is about $40,000. Again, our share is 5% or about $2,000. All the lighting that's going to be replaced is going to be LED lighting, runway lights, reels, and the PAPs. All our electric bill should go down significantly. I'm also going to try to talk to our engineers about including the airport beacon into the project. The beacon is the green and white rotating beacon. It's on all night long. And right now, that is, it's an older unit. It has a 400 watt metal hell eye lamp inside, and that would be converted to an LED system also. Any questions on airport projects? Okay, we have our dawn control pancake breakfast coming up June 4th. Sunday, June 4th runs from 7 to 11. It's a great event for the community. We're hoping for great weather. If we get good weather, we have airplanes that fly in from the surrounding areas to join the event. We may have some aircraft coming down from Grayling, Blackhawk potentially. Um, one of my, actually, my dentist, he owns a jet aircraft. He and four others might be flying their jet aircraft in for the event. So it's always good when we can get airplanes to come and join. Uh, let's see, what else do I have? The Easter egg drop, that was April 8th. Of course, we didn't drop the eggs. It was a blizzard out there. So, but the kids still had a great time. They still got their little treats. And it's always a great event each year that we do that. That's all I have for you.
Thank you. First of all, I want to thank you for letting the county firefighters train at the airport. Keith was wonderful. We had a nice lunch afterwards, after our discussion. It just worked out doing a nice training there.
Yeah, I'm sorry I missed that. I was unable to attend, but I hear it was a great event for you guys.
Very, and it worked out awesome. Also, that pancake supper, that fly-in, that's really good. I've been attending that along with Mark and a few other.
Never missed a meal.
No, and it's delicious, and it's a nice.
Very good breakfast. Say again? A normal won't be, she hasn't attended that in quite some time.
In full transfers and chair?
Yes, it is.
Great asset we have.
Thank you.
Parliamentary inquiry, Mr. Chair. Oh, yeah, I was wondering, in our agenda, how is the correspondence? How is that determined to be what is put in the agenda? Because I saw two, only two inquiries that were of emails that were sent. I copied, I printed out 105, and there's over, I got tired of printing them. There's over 150 pages or emails of correspondence from people. And this is how many I found that were for the SAD project, right here. Nothing, none at all. And there were only two letters that were put in, and one of them, I think, objected to another portion of what was going on with our lake. So my question is, how is correspondence determined to be put in the packets of the agenda items? And what is put on the agenda items on our website?
Let me find out, and I'll get back with you. I can't give, I can't give you a permitted action right now or.
Could you ask our controller, Mr. Chair?
Yes, I will, and I'll get back with you.
Can you ask her now, Mr. Chair?
No, I'll wait. And I will get back with you. Thank you.
Okay, I also have some other parliamentary inquiries. Mr. Chair, I sent four different emails. I don't know if they were opened or not or read by you. One of them, I did receive a response. And in today's agenda, my motion to hold all activities and so forth was decided to be put back on the agenda. It is, I noticed it is not in our packet. Is that agenda item, I understand it was put back on last night or the night before last? Is that motion going to be in? I didn't notice it in there. Maybe it's there somewhere. I'm sorry. Is it there? Okay, good. Okay, thank you. I appreciate that. And I also want to talk about the resolution. Uh, we talked about that a little bit last week, and I'm wondering what the real reason is. We cannot have the resolution supporting the legal lake levels on all of our lakes. What is the reason that that resolution cannot be put on today? This has been out there for a month and a half now. Can you answer that, Mr. Chair? What is the reason you can't answer that? You should, you should have a reason, Mr. Chair. You just can't, you just can't continue to say, no, I can't answer. I'll find out for you and get back to you because you never do.
Yes, I do. With that being said, we'll recess and we'll start our meeting at 10:00 a.m. From the Roscommon County Board of Commissioners meeting, May 10, 2023. Can we stand for the pledge?
............................................................
You're welcome. Roll call, board members.
Russo?
Yes.
Astergren?
Yes.
Wolfson?
Yes.
Milburn?
Yes.
Censor?
Yes.
Approval of the agenda before we approve that motion number one, motion number three, and motion number four. I'm going to wait two weeks, and that'll be on there because it was just discussed today. So they'll be pulled for two weeks.
Mr. Chair?
I'll second that.
I have, I have some additions.
What is this?
Okay, I sent an email back on April the 30th asking that one of the agenda items be the current law term performance, possible termination. I'd like to have that addressed at some future meeting, but I just want to know. I want to let the chair know that I'm sending these motions out to be put well before the time limit, and they are either ignored or not open. And I want to, and I want the chair to, you know, start considering the motions that I sent in. The other one is something that. I apologize. Thank you. You're supposed to watch for me.
I, I was too far back of my chair.
Anyway, the other, the other couple items I have, have to do with the temporary fix to the Higgins Lake Dam. That was pulled in our last meeting because the resolution wasn't answered. But the authority was already in the resolution that was passed last December. And I have a really difficult time. I think it's, I was really puzzled, and I sent this email out to everyone, and I wanted to be able to talk about that in this meeting. So I'd like that added to the agenda. Also, the resolution, addressing what we verbally talked about, supporting and affirming the legal levels on Holton Lake, Lake St. Island, and Higgins Lake in Roscommon County. I would like that put on the agenda. I asked to have it put on the agenda, and again, it was ignored. And I can get a copy of that around to everybody. That's why I'd like to have that, Mr. Chair.
The lake levels, wherever he brought it up, we don't have no plans on changing lake levels for any three lakes. So I don't know why you want to bring that up again.
Well, I understand, but a resolution is, in writing, is far more deliberate and affirming than just saying something. And that's why I want this put on there as a resolution.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
On that subject, I think the proper way for resolutions to be handled is it's brought to the work session. We talk about it, an issue. We decide how we want to handle it by resolution, by motion, or by other means. And then we are instructed to be brought to the board, however we decide. I don't think it's up to one board member to bring a resolution to the board. I think it has to be a board-directed thing.
Okay. I agree, and we talked about it in the last meeting. We talked about it in the meeting before this resolution. And it's been bouncing around. And if we, if you want to put it off till the next meeting, that's fine. But I, but I would like this resolution to be addressed.
I'll physically make a note and put it on the work session.
Astergren?
Yes.
Wolfson?
Yes.
Milburn?
Yes.
Censor?
Yes.
Russo?
Yes.
Number five, please.
Approval of the minutes for 4/26 2023 regular meeting and 4/26 2023 budget and finance meeting.
That motion. I'll second that discussion. Third call roll, please.
Wolfson?
Yes.
Milburn?
Yes.
Censor?
Yes.
Russo?
Yes.
Astergren?
Yes.
Class A claims and accounts.
Move to approve class A bills in the amount of $677,804.35.
That motion, Mr. Chair? Third call roll, please.
Milburn?
Yes.
Censor?
Yes.
Russo?
Yes.
Astergren?
Yes.
Wolfson?
Yes.
Censor?
Claims and accounts.
Move to approve claims and accounts in the amount of $115,518.77.
So move. Please call.
Yes. Russo?
Yes.
Astergren?
Yes.
Wolfson?
Yes.
Milburn?
Yes.
Censor?
Public comment. Yes, sir. Oh, I got one coming up here already.
If it's a public comment, it's open to a variety of subjects.
Yeah, please put your mic on and identify your name.
My name is Eric Waters. April 28th, approximately, DNR released a press release stating that they had declined Camp Grayling's expansion. I think most of us know now that was smoke and mirrors. In fact, that they are leasing 2,000 acres, or 52,000 acres to Camp Grayling. The intent is electronic warfare, development, and training. I think DNR kind of circumvented the process. This way, they do not have to do an environmental impact study as they did before. And their timeframe has moved forward a couple of years. In addition to that, there's clauses in this memorandum that allow them basically to change the rules at any time they want without public input. This board has spoke on this subject before, and I request that you take a look at it and let them know how you feel. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Yes, sir. Please turn the mic on, state your name.
I'm Greg Seemack, and I'm a resident of Gears Township. I want to speak a little bit about the proposed sap for Higgins Lake. I want to ask the Board of Commissioners to try and understand why so many people are voicing their opposition to the creation of a special assessment district at Higgins Lake. It starts with the simple fact that doing so is not necessary. In all the meetings I've attended, I have yet to hear the cost of the project that the Higgins Lake Dam supposedly needs. Many people have asked what the cost of the project might be. And he has published that it can no longer afford its financial responsibility. Think about that. No one has yet to determine what the project costs. How can the board determine that the cost to maintain the dam is too high without knowing what the cost is? Where is the written assessment that supports the county's claim that it can no longer support maintenance of the Higgins Lake Dam? Where is the written assessment that supports the county's claim that it can no longer support maintenance of the Higgins Lake Dam? The people's next concern was the why now? After some discussion, it seemed like there really wasn't much that needs to be done now at the Higgins Lake Dam. So we were told things like, well, we might need things later. With that in mind, most residents think that later becomes the time to consider doing this. Does anyone think it's prudent to buy a new washing machine today because your two-year-old machine might break in five or 10 years? Let's spend the money now. You might say, oh, that logic can't apply because this is government. Well, yes, it can for businesses, for organizations, or for government. But people also consider proper planning as being important to any organization. In this case, people wonder if proper planning for later might make the proposed special assessment district unnecessary well into the future. The history of Higgins Lake indicates that the residents have privately funded projects like this in the past, and they are offering to do so again. Private funds have fought invasive species being brought into the lake. Private funds have paid for expensive lake studies to understand what's necessary to maintain the water quality of Higgins Lake. Private funds to the tune of hundreds of thousands of dollars have sponsored a science-based program that has greatly reduced swim research. Higgins Lake Property Owners Association and the Higgins Lake Land Conservancy have asked to meet with the commissioners in order to reach a plan that does not need to include a SAD. There has been no response whatsoever to this request for a meeting. Think about that. A solution has been posed and no one is even interested in pursuing it. How is it possible that you can turn your back on that? Residents are looking at the cost necessary to create a SAD. What they see is that hundreds of thousands of dollars are being spent to set up SADS in Roscommon County. Tens of thousands of dollars are being spent to set up a SAD at Higgins Lake, ostensibly to pay for a few thousand dollars a year in maintenance for the foreseeable future. A mailing with little to no value was sent out at a time when few residents were in the area with a predictable response rate of less than 10% and at a cost of two or three years' worth of dam maintenance. Residents are wondering who authorized that? While we're talking about costs, what are the details of apportionment that are to be a part of the special assessment district? That question has also been asked many times and the answer still is, no one knows. Residents look at the project and see that it is, that is operating in a vacuum. There has been little to no board discussion about the Higgins Lake Special Assessment District at these public board meetings. The attitude seems to be to let the attorney figure everything out. This is an attorney who has implied that every lake in the state with a dam has a special assessment district, which is not true. This attorney has guaranteed that you cannot get a permit to repair a dam without getting a deviation of the legal lake level from a court. This is not true. This is an attorney who implied that she has had discussions with the supervisors of Lyon Township and Gairish Township and they are on board. This is not true. She implied that a survey needed to be sent out to gather needed input from the residents. This was not true. She said that no dam repair work can be done without numerous expensive lake studies. This is not true. This attorney has advised you that you need to pay her to set up a special assessment district for Higgins Lake in order to protect yourself from liability in case of a catastrophic event that has never happened in the history of Higgins Lake and the results of which she implied would be the equivalent of the disaster at Sanford Lake, which for Higgins Lake is physically impossible. Residents are hard pressed to understand why you consider, continue to employ this attorney, given all the misleading information she has given you, and yet you continue to let her lead you on. So these are some of the things why residents are voicing their opinions and opposition to the Higgins Lake Special Assessment District. To summarize, we have a project that is not necessary. We have a board that is turning their back on a potential solution to the stated problem at hand. We have large sums of money being spent without apparent concern for value received. We're hearing no public discussion by the board of the details is what is being pushed along. It appears that the board has taken a secondary leadership position to, in my opinion, a dishonest advisor whose main concern is taking as much money as possible from Roscommon County. The Higgins Lake Property Owners Organization, for which there are hundreds of members, opposes the special assessment district. The Higgins Lake Land Conservancy, which there are many donors in all locations on the lake, opposes the special assessment district. The Veterans of Camp Cornelia, which has 405 homes and occupies almost a linear mile of Higgins Lake, opposes the special assessment. Yeah, I have one paragraph to read. Can I finish? You have the authority to do that. Allow me to finish.
Morning. My name is Francis Fitzgerald. I'm a resident of Roscommon County. And I live in the same neighborhood as that dangerous dam on Higgins Lake. It's 33 feet across, made of boards. It's tampered with all the time, which is a little tough because we have a neighborhood association that works all the time. It's in a park. It's pristine. Very labor-intensive. Maybe send one person out. I could change the boards myself. It's ridiculous what you're trying to propose for Higgins Lake, the special assessment district. It's easy to spend somebody else's money when you're not paying it for yourself. I'm a resident, you're a resident, and I'm going to be paying for this SAD tax, this new special assessment district, which is a tax on selective property tax owners. You don't pay it. I'll pay it. And I would probably even agree to pay it and before the SAD tax, if you would volunteer to pay it yourselves as residents. Because everybody benefits from the lake, not just the people who live there. The thousands of people that I see come in and out of the South State Park on Higgins Lake that are all across the lake, every weekend, during the week, and on holidays, they all benefit. Everyone benefits, not just the people who live on the lake. This committee, those who support this, will probably have the legacy of passing the largest tax increase in the history of Roscommon County on property tax owners. That's what we're looking at with the SAD. The special district, special assessment district is a government way of describing a new property tax. Let's just call it that. We've heard a lot of remarks about being transparent. Oh, this is a transparent issue. We should all be transparent. How transparent was it in December to pass this? Without notification. Did you feel pretty transparent about that after that happened, for those of you who voted for it? I don't think so, or you shouldn't have. Let's talk just a minute about, do we need it? Looking at the 2022 budget, 35 million in annual revenues for the county. It was a 15% surplus in general funds. A 10% surplus in special funds. So not knowing exactly how that money's budgeted, that gives you a 3.5 to 5.2 million dollar surplus in the budget. Plus the money that's budgeted already for the maintenance and upkeep of Higgins Lake dam and others. I've also heard the statement, hey, we did it to the Houghton Lake property taxpayers. We're doing it to the St. Helen property taxpayers. Might as well do it to the Higgins Lake property taxpayers also. But that is not a good analogy. Houghton Lake has its own problems. It's different than St. Helen. It's different than Higgins. The amount of money that it would take to fix the problems at Houghton Lake are a lot larger than what would happen to Higgins. If the Higgins Lake went out, if the dam ever went out, and it's not going to, I was there this morning. All it would do is have water rush down that river to Houghton. This isn't labor-intensive. This isn't dangerous. This beautiful transparent brochure that I got in the mail that has the pristine picture of the lake. Modernizing the lake level control structure for safe operations and a reliable lake level for Higgins Lake. I could read this to my granddaughter when she goes to bed, knowing that she's going to be safe and have a reliable lake. Give me a break. What this should say is, we're going to raise your property taxes at for this amount to pay for something that's not needed. Property tax increase is not listed in this beautiful five-color transparent brochure that you sent. There's nothing more. This is nothing more than a tax on selective tax owner. That's it. Last thing I'd like to admit, or that I'd like to say is, discussions have been made and started to file an attorney grievance with the Attorney Grievance Commission for the Department of Attorney General for misconduct, possible misconduct and ethics violations. Thank you. For false and misleading statements, does that sound familiar? Thank you for your time. Appreciate it. Look forward to talking to you again.
Morning. My name is Melanie Brown and I appreciate this opportunity to be able to speak to you today. I live right now at 1769 East Higgins Lake Drive at Almeida Beach. My husband's family has maintained seasonal homes in this location since the 1920s, and his grandfather is a founding member of the Almeida Beach Association. My comments to you focus on the special assessment district for maintaining the Higgins Lake legal lake level. I have provided comments twice before the commissioners regarding my initial concerns and find that none of these have been addressed. It appears that the commission is continuing down the path of establishing a SAD for Higgins Lake, and I appreciate this opportunity to express my continuing concerns. My first concern relates to the decision-making and public process for the SAD. There's no mention of the Higgins Lake SAD agenda for today's meeting, yet there appears at the end of the supporting materials for the meeting, an undated tentative plan for setting up the SADS and engineering work for lakes in Roscommon County, including Higgins Lake. It's not clear where this plan came from as it is unsigned, without letterhead and undated. The plan contains no acknowledgement of public concerns regarding Higgins Lake SAD expressed to the commission to date, and no clear description of the problem that a SAD is needed to address, and no alternative methods for maintaining Higgins Lake legal lake levels. Several groups have communicated with the commission about working together to describe and address issues with the legal lake levels, including Higgins Lake Foundation, Higgins Lake Property Owners Association, and the Higgins Lake Land Conservancy. Using a collaborative process with stakeholders to define the problem and develop solutions, it's likely to be a more efficient and effective way to use the county's resources to address the legal lake levels. Lake levels are broad concern to more than just lakefront property owners and those with legal private access. My second concern is the content of public outreach materials for the Higgins Lake SAD distributed by the commission. The background section to the commission's April 20th mailing seems to leave out some important information that should be considered for the SAD. These include, number one, the commission should acknowledge that there is ongoing litigation regarding the legal lake level. Why is there a need to set up a SAD before this case is resolved? Number two, how does the county plan to identify the geographic boundaries of the SAD? The current attempt to survey potential property owners that may be included in the SAD is unlikely to provide information for a number of reasons, including poor return rate, inaccurate responses, and biased answers. A legal review of establishing a SAD in Michigan by Michigan Property Consultants LLC found that a county needs scientific, legal, and economic facts to support the establishment of a geographic boundaries of a SAD. What other methods besides survey has the commission used to provide scientific, legal, and economic facts to develop the Higgins Lake SAD? Number three, the commission should explain why the legal lake level suddenly can no longer be supported by the county general fund. But it's a situation that leads the commission to believe that a SAD is the only solution to this so far undefined problem. Number four, I'm concerned that there seems to be a one-size-fits-all mentality regarding SADS. Just because a SAD is used for St. Helens and Houghton Lakes, that is not a reason to apply the same to Higgins Lake. Likewise, considering there are 11,000 inland lakes in Michigan over 83 counties, I'm not at all surprised that it's stated in the April 20th mailing, nearly every county with legal lake levels has a SAD for each lake. Just because everyone else is doing it, it doesn't mean that we should too. More questions should be answered to determine if the SAD is right for Higgins Lake. These could include, how many lakes with legal lake levels have had the need to establish a SAD and does Higgins Lake have a similar need? Did those lakes include a large population of users from state parks and how is that addressed with a SAD? How did a SAD work over time in addressing the lake level maintenance and how much were those in the SAD charged? Was it an effective approach for managers and those benefiting from the legal lake level? And finally, what other methods besides a SAD have been used to manage legal lake levels? I hope that the commission will consider public comments and take advantage of the offers of collaboration from various Higgins Lake organizations. Let's work together to understand the problem and develop a solution at an appropriate time in an effective manner. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Chairman, Commissioners. Just for the record.
What's your name, please?
Bob Fry.
Thank you, Bob.
And the chairman of the Higgins Lake Land Conservancy. This is just for the record. We have a project that's not necessary. We have a board, as you, that seems to be turning their back on a potential solution to the problem. We have large sums of money being spent without apparent concern for value received. We're hearing no public discussion by the board on the details of what's being pushed along. The Higgins Lake Property Owners Association organization, for which there are hundreds of members, close to 500, opposes the special assessment district. Higgins Lake Land Conservancy, which has hundreds of donors too, in all locations on the lake, opposes the special assessment district. The Veterans Camp Cornelia, which has 405 homes, occupies almost a linear mile of the lake, opposes the special assessment district. I have personally heard from many other organizations, and so have you, and none of them support the special assessment district that I know of. I'll ask you, what organization do you know on Higgins Lake that supports the special assessment district? Does anybody have any knowledge of any organization on Higgins Lake that supports it? A special assessment district is by design supposed to, supposed to provide a benefit for the residents within the district boundaries. There is virtually no one within this district that supports it. Please reconsider this potential special assessment district for the Higgins Lake Dam. Please rescind the previous board's decision to pursue this unnecessary project and put your own stamp on your board's activities. Please stop all future expenses for the Higgins Lake Special Assessment District now, including removing the Higgins Lake Special Assessment District from the plan of action. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Yes, sir.
Our property is a unified time-glass road. Been around the lake the whole life. We have some pictures in our website, hlpoa.org. I really encourage you all to at least have a look at what is there in terms of scientific content, our data, you know, what is really going on in the lake. Just by way of illustration, these are screen prints from our website. The county does support jointly with the US Geological Survey lake level recording device at the South State Park. Works very well. A little hard to sort out what it really means if you're not familiar with that kind of thing. So we have a
Member who's a little picture here. If you all have a copy of it. Shows. How the lake level varies relative to the. Quartered minimums in the winter and the quarter legal summer levels. And as you can tell, you know, the people that are managing the dam are doing a good job. From the data that we have, we see every day. People do their best to run the big level to that contour. I think we'll see as the year goes on that that's going to look pretty good. It's being well tended now, I think. I think the simplest way to summarize this whole thing is we don't have a problem up there. And. I think a lot of talk has been put out in front of this board about potential liability in case of dam failure. Some of the other things and that is really, I mean, it just makes no sense at all. So really, I guess to summarize everything, I respectfully request the commissioners to rescind the sad for Higgins Lake. Is entirely appropriate for Holden Lake, perhaps for St. Helen. I don't know anything about St. Helen. But I would in addition request that no further funds be spent. In any respect for supporting activity relative to a sad on Higgins Lake. It's simply unnecessary.
Thank you. Thank you. Anybody else? Yes, ma'am.
Good morning. Thank you. I'm Charlene Cornell from Gary's Township. I just want to go on record and take this opportunity to deliver an invitation to you. To meet with me from HLPOA and Bob Fry from the Land Conservancy. So that we can form some working relationship and. Of this or attempt to solve this. On Higgins Lake.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else for public comment? Andy, is there anybody on Zoom? Okay, let's move on to Controller's Report.
Got this new stand, so give me. Um, well, good morning. We right now have three open lawsuits that are participated in. Courage versus Roscommon County Treasurer, that is, and again, in relation to tax foreclosures. There was a couple cases that intertwined with this. One of them is Fox versus Isabella County. As a portion of Fox versus Isabella County. The plaintiff was looking to and had originally by the lower courts been granted the right to do a class action. Which would apply to any and all counties essentially in Michigan. The Sixth Circuit Court of Appeals actually vacated that class certification. So that that portion of that is gone. We do still have that critical question of the measure of compensation. So what is the relief under the federal Fifth Amendment? That will be granted to property owners whose houses were taken for failure to pay property taxes and then resold again. So that remains out there. We'll we'll see how long this answer goes because of course, everybody. Everybody has a lawyer in opinion, so. Chill versus Roscommon County. We do have the motion for early scheduling. Which actually was our status conference for July twentieth, twenty twenty three at two twenty five PM. I'm going to encourage all of you to be there. Especially Commissioner Censor and Commissioner Wolfson, since this is a newer proceeding for you. But please mark that on your schedule, July twentieth at two twenty five PM. The opiate suit, we are awaiting the final payout now from the agreement that has come forth in regards to the. Lovely pharmaceutical companies that have been included in the suits as well. There is a training that I'm going to attend next week through the state of Michigan. As you know, what you're allowed to utilize this opiate settlement on. Has to fall under what the state says we can spend it on. Traditionally, that's going to fall within the realm of our jail programs to support central Michigan District Health. In their battle against opiates and potentially programs within our schools for early education. But I will go to that training and see where it goes for that. Special assessment projects. So like St. Helen, the boundaries for the districts are almost complete. There. Were a few couple plats and those are being reviewed deed by deed by the engineering firm and then doing the historical research as that as well. The meeting to present to Richfield Township Board is scheduled for June twentieth, twenty twenty three at six PM during their regular meeting. And I know that Commissioner Wolfson plans to attend as that is in his district as well. Higgins Lake, the presentations to both Lion and Garrish Township Boards are scheduled for May seventeenth. Garrish will be at four PM and Lion will be at seven during their regular board meeting. The presentation for Beaver Creek Township is actually tonight at their regular meeting at six o'clock. The boundaries have been established for the district and they are online on the lake level website as well. Just a reminder after listening to everything and a reminder to the newer board members. The current process that you're going through is only to establish boundaries. You go to thirty fourth Circuit Court, just like we did for Holden Lake. The court holds the establishment hearing on who's in and who's out, and that completes the current process. There is not a project. There hasn't been a proposed project. Those are all things that are a totally separate. Process. What I will tell you is Fisher Wilson's probably the best expert that sits up here on that. Because the process for lake level special assessment district projects has to follow the drain code. So there's a lot of public hearings, notifications. That's when you get to the apportionment process. But the original thing that you're doing right now is establishing a sad. So just the boundaries. Like, we actually have good news on Holden Lake. So another recap, obviously, two years ago. Little over two years ago now, it came to the attention of the then Board of Commissioners. That there was some damage to one of the lower gateholds. Went in, got the permit, blocked off the water and realized that both of those gate holdings needed to be completely and utterly. They needed to be repaired. That being said, as we did the bid processing that ran out. Through the purchasing policy for engineering studies, just for the design portion. We went with not the lowest, but the best mid bid for that. That was about eighty five thousand dollars at the time. That bit award is still outstanding because it became very apparent that somehow you had to come up with over one point five million dollars. In order to just do the basic repairs that were going to be needed. So here we go. The sad was created. The boundaries were approved by thirty fourth Circuit Court. We just received notification yesterday from Benzeski and Co., who is our municipal finance director. That we do have an offer to sell the one point five million dollar bond. Which means that you can proceed forward with that engineering design study. And get yet moving on repairing the actual structure of Holden Lake. So we will, we will get that portion going, but we'll have to get through the bond. If you would like me to, I can ask somebody from Benzenzki and Company to come and explain that bonding process to you a little bit more. If that would, okay, so I will put that on my list to get added on to. So lake levels, everybody's high. St. Helen summer, six point two four is the gauge height. It is currently at six point seven three with all of the boards removed and the gate open. Holden Summer is eight point one gauge height, eight point seven eight with all of the boards removed and the gates opened. Higgins is five point three seven gauge height is currently at five point five two with all of the gates open to twenty percent. Ideally, what I've been trying to do is stay as close as I can to the legal summer level. Without intentionally baking water. That's not working so good right now because it's it's high. So we do have to open one gate on Higgins to bring it back down a little bit because it is over an inch above legal level right now. I try not to send them down there. For various reasons. Every day to open and to close on any of these, but we're doing the best we can. Pretty important legislative update, which.
Can I, can I do, can I ask? Chair. Make a statement on Higgins, Holden and Lake St. Helen, the issues that she just went over? Okay, okay, I will. I thank you.
Separate from that, a pretty large impactful legislative update for you. I know Commissioner Censor has already heard some of this information. This will be newer to you. One of the largest expenses that we are mandated through the state of Michigan is the childcare fund. Childcare fund is for adjudicated youth, youth brought through to the system. This is one of those areas. That we are blessed to have good people in that court down there that try to do the best for our youth that are brought into the system. We try to take care of our own in the best way we know possible based on Roscommon County. However, there is a large packet of bills regarding juvenile justice reforms that are headed to the Senate for approval. It's in the guise of being these very positive things. They are not very positive things for Roscommon County. Several of these bills will impact how and what our childcare fund budget can spend on and will be reimbursed for. And it will increase the amount of spending that the county must allocate from the general fund for each child involved in the system. Specific psychological and physical assessments will need to be made for every single youth. I was explaining to Commissioner Censor between the breaks. So essentially. Have the ability of, let's say that my child. Who's for all intents and purposes minus eye rolls is a pretty good kid. And gets caught doing something in school and they want to make an example of her, so they bring her into the system. The court has the ability, juvenile court has the ability to do what they call consent agenda. And that is where they say, hey Rex, you're a pretty good kid, Mr. Wilson. And we don't want to put you into the system, so we're going to put you on this consent calendar. Where we meet with you every two weeks for the next six months to make sure that you're on the straight and narrow and if you need counseling, et cetera. Well, one of the things the state has said is at any point in time that they touch juvenile, they must have a physical and mental assessment. If you're looking at three hundred kids, maybe a hundred and fifty have them right now and those aren't inexpensive. So that's one of the ways that we will be seeing an increase for that allocation next year if these bills pass. One of the other interesting parts of these bills is the courts where lose the ability to collect from parents. Therefore, if you have a parent who. Has some responsibility in the behavior of their child. You cannot require them to pay for any of the cost for placements or treatment. So that will cut us by about probably sixty thousand in revenues that they are able to bring in currently to offset allocations. More fun as we go on, legal representation for juvenile offenders will now. Become a part of the Michigan Intigen Defense Commission. That means that we'll go through the same process that we do for adults right now. It will increase the allocations to the MIDC. So so that's another, another way that we will lose oversight and increase costs as well. This is all wrapped up in this really interesting tagline that the state of Michigan is increasing the amount that they are going to give to the counties. For reimbursement from fifty percent to seventy five percent. The part that they're leaving off is that is only for in-home treatment. Unfortunately, in our county, in-home treatment is rarely an option. The in-home is the part that that's the problem for a lot of the things. That will still only be fifty percent reimbursement. So. I would tell you best estimate in talking to our juvenile court referee. For twenty twenty four, there'd be an additional probably one fifty to two hundred thousand dollar increase in what we will be looking. To allocate to the childcare fund. So good news. Daily work. If you haven't had a chance to stop in, our auditor is here. He is in full swing. For those of the commissioners that have not been here when we're being audited. It works very much so like the auditor emails me, Noel or Julie. Or stops in to talk to us or texts and says, I'm looking for this and we ask them how high we should jump. So whatever the auditor needs, the auditor gets at this point. So we are fully at their disposal. So occasionally emails take may take a little longer or some projects are going to get put on the back burner. His onsite, their onsite normally lasts about three weeks and then there's about three weeks off. There will then be a formal presentation to the Board of Commissioners, questions, copies provided, et cetera. There is always a meeting with our budget and finance committee. The clerk, the treasurer, myself and Sheriff Stern, since he has some of the largest. General fund expenditures that come through the jail to kind of preview the audit. And as a reminder, the budget and finance committee is Commissioner Ostrin and Commissioner Russo. So I'm gypsy moth notification of spray blocks were mailed out. And our gypsy moth specialist is monitoring the hatch. Growth and weather conditions for our optimal spray this year. Praying there's no rain, praying it happens before Memorial Day weekend. That never seems to happen though. Our sheriff's department was unfortunately not eligible for federal funding for our Marie Patrol. Oddly, it's because the general fund committed too much money to them last year. I don't really understand, but they were awarded thirty seven five thousand for the state grant. So that's actually half of the monetary amount that we have traditionally budgeted. We've been anywhere between seventy five thousand to ninety thousand, but it is enough at least for some targeted seasonal patrols on all three of our lakes. We also received a small grant for ORV patrol of roughly eight thousand dollars. So that'll be the same thing. You'll be able to have some targeted small patrols on those busy weekends as well. I have been working with the airport to obtain a thirty two thousand dollar American Rescue Plan Fund grant. That can be utilized to offset expenses that we will obtain this year for general operations. Lieutenant Back, who is our jail administrator, and I completed a new application and financial request for the housing of federal inmates to the US Marshal Services. The last application was submitted five years ago. We have been housing federal inmates ever since. However. You have increased wages, you have increased costs for housing. So that has gone in. It's normally with federal marshals. Several different go rounds before we can settle on what that cost per will be. Our Michigan Municipal Liability Insurance Renewal has increased officially ten percent. Roughly two oh seven to two twenty eight thousand. That takes effect July first, twenty twenty three. A large majority of that increase is through cost to ensure law enforcement. Oh, that was, that was kind of surprising to me. I knew it would go up, but I wasn't. Wasn't quite prepared for that to be the area in my head where it went up in. So. I am continuing with several personnel issues and I've been corresponding with our labor attorney on one in particular. We also are continuing our four county discussions and planning for a potential juvenile detention center. That's Crawford, Alpine, Gladwin and Roscommon that have been meeting to discuss. It has been determined that because of the placement of the counties looking for ease of access. And for proximity to a hospital and services that either Southern Crawford or Northern Roscommon would be the ideal location for that. So that's kind of a win in ours. That's all.
Thank you, Jody.
Great. I have some questions now?
Yes.
As to the lake laws, Jody and Rex and I had a great meeting the other day and I want to try to get this all off on the right vein because I think we're. Finally, going to start being able to. Move ahead in a positive vein, but I just wanted to talk about Higgins, Holden and Lake St. Helen, the water levels yesterday. Higgins is one point eight inches over. Holden Lake was eight point one six inches over. And Lake St. Helen was five point eight eight inches over and it's. It's impossible on Higgins Lake. It's impossible to bank water because the top with all the gates are up. The top of the LLCS is at the legal level. So you're not banking water if those gates are up. And in the meantime, so you have to make a judgment call here. If Holden Lake is eight point one six inches over, should we be sending more water down to Holden? But the answer to that, I won't finish making my statement, Mr. Mr. Okay. It, it, so I, I, I would ask the delegated authority. If it would make more sense to have all the gates up. It's not banking water if it goes over the top of the LLCS. You also have a four point seven five foot wide open spillway dumping water down to Holden. It doesn't, I would say you were in much, much, much more violation. Of sending more water down to Holden Lake when it's already eight point one six inches over. That's my comment. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
Jody, could you reinforce what you said initially about the special assessment district as far as no projects?
Okay, so there seems to be a misconception, and, and I get the, there's a lot of confusion. There's a lot of misinformation, not enough information that goes forward. But there is no project for Higgins Lake. This Board of Commissioners, in order to do anything that would charge money to a special assessment district, one, two, or three, any of them, would be required to file the drain code. You'd have to have obviously a big discussion of the board. There has to be public meetings. There's actually a public, there's a whole you know, whole rigmarole notifications, apportionments. I don't know if anybody's in an actual drain district that's here because they would have gone through that process. I don't know, Higgins, Higgins has that one. So over by Johnson, Johnson Boulevard, they've got the little garish, but that's Higgins Lake. Same difference to me. I'm impartial. No, no, Higgins Lake. So it's that same process. I, there's a, I call it the day of reckoning. I don't know what else to call it. There's a whole day where, yeah. That's second from the public hearing. So after the public hearing goes through. And right now, I mean, you know, the public's right. We're not broken on Higgins Lake. God bless, we're not broken. But the special assessment district, this, this portion that you are working on and that that resolution is based on is only to create boundaries. That being said, the second portion of that, and everybody leaves before the budget hearing portion where we discussed the budget last week. I spoke with you in regards to the 2022 expenditures to date on the special assessment district. And I had had the conversation with the board at that time that we have a tax payment fund. The tax payment fund is the money that the treasurer used to reimburse all the other taxing entities for delinquent taxes. Then we collect fines fees from those people as they pay on. They have their late fee percentages that are first. It's also where monies for sole properties that were in tax foreclosures, the difference between A and B throughout the last hundred years has gone. So in that fund, there needs to be a parade tenure policy of the board. There needs to be enough money to make all of those taxing entities whole. Treasurer Reagan makes an estimate based on the last couple of years, looking at economic trends, housing trends, and brings to me and says, this is how much money I anticipate in 2023, I'm going to need to make these whole. It's right at about 4.2 million right now. We are, as I talked about the Isabella and the Fox Court cases, there is going to be a decision eventually that says you must repay these people the difference between what they owed and something. It's the something difference in how far back that we don't know yet. Worst case scenario was 1.8 million. That has left us with roughly $500,000 to do these setups of the special assessment districts. This Board of Commissioners has the ability to take those assessments and say, we want that to be a special project, and we're going to charge it back to the set. We can go through the whole public hearing process. We can email all the notifications out. Or you have the alternative option of saying, we know that money is probably not going to be replenished because you can no longer keep proceeds above what it costs you to get the tax money back and what it, what it costs you to advertise and things. So we're not going to see a big increase in that tax payment fund, but you have the ability to make that decision not to charge that back. So those are the things I just want, like, there's, there's options and options, so.
Going to shoot from the hip here, with your permission. Break after I get done. With your permission. You know, when I first got elected years ago, you know, we had the veterans would get together and he's a bunch of old guys would be sitting out there, and I, when I say old guys, I mean women too. The veterans would sit out there, and it was, I think, $30,000 in the fund budget back then. Now we have well over 157. How much money you got the veterans right now, Jody? What is this email? $160,000?
I don't know off the top of my head. I can peek while you're talking.
Kicker is, is that they got kind of a stable here. And I'm glad you brought up the childcare fund because that's very unstable. A little cold here. The general fund is only intended to support mandated and essential services as an unreliable source of funds. It is the sole responsibility of this board, Roscommon County Board, to maintain the legal levels. Although all three pristine lakes and their water sheds include rivers and streams are unique, consistency is a key to long-term management of these natural resources. The special assessment district will provide a clear, cohesive, consistent, stable, and exacting funding mechanism that will ensure all lake level control structures and lake management projects are completely timely, effectively and efficiently, and now for the future. That being said, sounds great. Put it all, I put it up on my computer this morning. Transparency is key. And Mr. C Mac, I think that's how you say your name, sir. I've seen you on the screen a few times. I haven't seen you in person. He's asked, he's mentioned some questions that I think need to be answered. I think the public deserves an answer. Some of the questions that you posed, and other folks have posed, because I've read the voluminous amount of emails that I've received, probably 150 of them. Some of them late into the evening and early in the morning. Mr. Ostrigan has talked about working together. I shoot from the hip here, Mr. Chair. With Mr. Ostrigan in with the board's permission, instead of removing the five until some of those questions could be answered. I'm just asking a thought here. Kind of shoot from the hip, but I don't see any, any rush right now. I could wait two weeks till some of those issues have been questioned, when those questions have been answered. However, Mr. Esker, you, you brought the motion forward. Would you be willing as an olive branch, with the chairman's permission and the board, to, to take that motion off the board until some of those answers, those questions could be answered?
Even though that's kind of like what my motion states.
I, I need, I need Mr. C Max and some other answers, some questions answered.
I, I, I would be willing to table it for another two weeks.
You should have come to me, but
I, I heard you say nice comments.
Yeah, we've had several discussions. I feel comfortable with just moving on with that motion Mr. Ostrigan put forward. Thank you.
If Mr. Ostrigan is prepared to remove it from the agenda, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, but then we're going to bring it up in two weeks. Let's just move forward with it right now. Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I have a question on the controller's report. Can I address the controller?
Yes.
On the bond issue. You're willing to sell a bond. Is that an open bond because we don't know total cost yet, the project?
So right now, the bond will cap at 1.5.
Well, that's going to limit how far we can go with the project.
Yep, so that will cover only that engineering design because we have no idea how much the other ones are going to cost. Hopefully, the engineering design will be well covered. We can redesign the bond later on. The board can choose to put out a new bond, which honestly, given the volatility lately, it's like, originally we put it out, and then California banks fell, and everybody went, we're not doing anything with municipal bonds. They asked, do you want to put it out again? And literally, I feel like as I was responding to them, we found out another bank collapsed. So we can take what we can get right now and start that design project and then revisit that, but.
So the bond.
Yes. It is a closed bond for 1.5 million.
Okay, so, so it's only going to get us partially through the project?
Yes, and we're going to have to do something else when we have more.
Once we go out for bids and everything, you get all the figures established, then we have to go for another one, and hopefully we can get one.
Yes, yeah, and I think that bringing Bobby on from Benzenski and Company, I think will be very helpful for all of us.
Okay, thank you.
Correspondence.
We have A through L on here. I did find out in break or to be on the sheet, it needs to be made out to Roscommon County Commissioners with a signature.
Thank you. Thanks for getting back, man.
Monthly department reports. We have A, Roscommon County Jail. B, Roscommon County Sheriff's Department. C, Northern Lakes Community Health. D, Roscommon County Animal Shelter. Number 11, do we have any visitors? Number 12, unfinished new business, Mr. Milburn.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. We're going to have a and have a resolution. Hopefully, next, next meeting, we have this Suicide Awareness Day flag. We're going to have a celebration slash event June 14th at 1 o'clock here at the, at the, yeah, I'll do it. Okay. Still focused on special assessment district. Here's our flag that we'll be flying, and we're going to have a celebration. The chairman of the board, he's the fire chief also. He'll be out there with the fire, fire departments, veterans, we're going to have have the VFW shoot the right place. Beach cake, the public's invited. It should take about 15 or 20 minutes. It's important here to realize that veterans a day died. 14th, which is Flag Day. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
I have some unfinished business, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Great. This has to do, of course, with the SADs. And why are we getting so much resistance in this process? And the answer to that is pretty simple. The old board skipped all the basic steps in the sales process and went directly to closing the SAD deal without going through the proper steps. Why was this done? I think it was done because they said the law says it can be done. The masterminds of our government are rarely correct when they approach things like this. We, as a Board of Commissioners, are not masterminds, and this whole SAD process was the wrong way to get this done. You can't treat people this way. You can't force this down their throats, no matter how beneficial you think it may be. Even though it may be totally legal, that doesn't mean it's the right thing to do. What did the old board do, and what is this board doing wrong? Establishing the need. The old board never talked to our constituents about the need on Higgins. There is a need on Holton. There is a need on Lake St. Helen, and there's no need on Higgins. If we have a need on Higgins, it needs to be explained to them in public meetings, and that's one of the reasons we should slow this process down. The public has never been told the price. The old board did this in secrecy. They never talked about what was going on until well after it was started and late in the game. The Higgins Lake process was started in February of 2022, and the first anyone heard anything about it wasn't until late last year. The old board never listened to or answered objections of our constituents. The old board and this board is not listening to the public. We need to start this process over and explain why we need a special assessment district. There need, that needs to be done before we move forward. The old board tried to create a sense of urgency when there wasn't one and generated a lot of mistrust. Questions need to be answered before continuing with the special assessment district, and that's what I would like to have done. What, what has, what has been discovered and explained before the SAD was initiated? What is the need? What's the total cost? No one knows. What's the end goal? As he said, even necessary on Higgins. This is one of the essential questions that need to be answered before SAD can be started, and I don't think it's been established. There needs to be a need. There, there, there may be a need on Holton and Lake St. Helen, but is there a need on Higgins? What will be included in the final cost? Why do we have to, to pass it to know what's in it? This is a big problem. I think the law firm needs to get some basic sales training because it appears that they've been jumping these SADS through all over the state while going through the proper process, using the law as a hammer, which has allowed them to make a lot of money at the public's expense. Here's what they should be able to do and estimate and have. How are the assessments going to be allocated? Will they be assessed by front footage? How will lake access properties, non-lake access, lakefront be assessed? How will the township properties on the lake be assessed? Shouldn't those using the township access sites pay a premium? How will the state parks be assessed, and how much will they pay? Shouldn't those using the state parks pay a premium? How will the DNR assessments be assessed? Shouldn't those using the DNR launches, would their boats pay a premium? These are a few of the questions that need to be explained. Is there a formula that can help everyone understand so people aren't going to feel that they are being taken advantage of? Will the counties be contributing its $10,000 per year to each special assessment district as everyone in the county benefits from all our lakes? What's the estimated cost to bring the Higgins Lake Dam into compliance with maintaining the legal level? Did the law firm say anything about different ways the SAD can be developed? No, they did not. No options were offered. It was only offered one way. Did they tell us that they could split the assessments 50/50 with the county? That's another way assessments can be divided. That's what they do in Lillaw County. The old board and this board has not done its due diligence, and it needs to. The process needs to stop, and we need to start over and get public support behind this with the SAD instead of jamming us through. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Okay, let's move on to motions. We're going to start with number five.
I move to bring number five to a vote.
Yes, which we're going to right now.
Move to halt all activities and expenditures regarding the development of the special assessment district on Higgins Lake as resolved on December 21st, 2022 until current litigation is complete. Public meetings are held and alternative methodologies for financing the management and operations of the Higgins Lake Control. The Higgins Lake Level Control Structure are investigated.
Motion.
I move to bring this motion to a vote as it is worded.
Second.
A second.
Discussion.
Am I doing good here, Andrew? I I would implore the good judgment of the board to wait two weeks.
Thank you, sir.
Are we talking about number five?
Well, that's where I'm, Mr.
Oh, I apologize. I, I withdraw my second. I thought we were talking about number two. I withdraw my second.
I'll second that then.
Some questions have been asked, and I think they deserve an answer. I believe we need the special assessment district. I truly do believe we do. However, some answers, some questions need to be answered. And I would implore the board, the chairman of the board, to have high respect for and admiration and the board as a general rule, just to wait two weeks. Mr. Ostrigan is, is, is asked, is, you pull your motion?
Yes, I, I move to table the motion. Not pull it, not pull it. I would.
You got to act on one motion at a time.
Yes, and we're on. Word.
But if we could just.
You can just say yes or no vote at this point, Mark.
I moved to table.
It's too late.
No, it's not.
Okay.
The bottom line is.
It's already been second. We're in discussion.
The bottom line is flexibility is.
I seconded.
And Mr. Chair, just test for two weeks.
Okay, any other discussion? Their call roll.
Russo?
No.
Astergren?
Yes.
Wolfson?
No.
Milburn?
Yes.
Sensor?
If you answer yes to this, or actually, if you answer no, is this single fraud again?
Yes.
And if you answer yes, does that mean that you have to? And if you answer yes, does that mean that you have to wait until litigation before moving forward? End of the litigation.
Yes.
And I vote no.
Thank you.
Motion failed.
Number six, please.
Move to adopt the following tentative plan of action. Tentative Plan of Action, Lake Level Management, Higgins, Houghton, Lake St. Helen. One, ongoing action, special assessment district or SAD, development, all three lakes. Two, during SAD development, delegate, delegated authority, DA, search and hire. Three, during SAD development, if temporary fixes are needed on any of the lakes before SADS are completed, the Board of Commissioners will request to lake level control structure modifications with Eagle in writing and request permit changes. Four, as each SAD is formed, the new DA will take over operation, maintenance, and oversight of any construction of the lake level control, control structures, excuse me. Five, financial administrative oversight of the lake level control structures is to be performed by the county controller administrator and will report monthly at the second meeting to the Board of Commissioners on progress. Six, oversight of the delegated authority and county controller will be retained by the county Board of Commissioners. Seven, an operation and maintenance plan shall be drafted for each lake by the DA with input from the Board of Commissioners, Eagle, and the DNR. Eight, Houghton Lake SAD is completed, so a new DA should be hired immediately. Nine, engineers shall be hired for SADS. I'm sorry, engineers shall be hired after SADS are brought online and work with the new DA to implement new lake level control structures. Ten, Board of Commissioners will hire an engineering firm and recommendations will be sought with input from the new DA. Eleven, implement engineering firms' recommendations with Eagle input. Twelve, the end goal of this plan is to shift responsibility of the lake level control structures to the new DA for ongoing operation and management and to have the new DA form a board with a Roscommon County Commissioner and representatives of each respective SAD for input on maintenance and operation.
Do I have a motion?
A little, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Discussion. Third call roll.
Astor Green.
Yes.
Milburn.
Yes.
Censor. Russo.
Yes.
Motion carried.
I have another motion, Mr. Chair.
No.
Yes, I can bring up a motion at any time, Mr. Chair, parliamentary inquiry. I can bring up a motion at any time I want.
But you
Yes, I can. Look it up. Okay, my motion is motion to halt all activities and expenditures regarding the development of the special assessment district on Higgins Lake as resolved on December twenty one, twenty twenty two. Public meetings are held and alternative methodologies for financing and management operations of the Higgins Lake Level Control Structure are investigated. I struck on the previous motion, which makes it a different motion until current litigation is completed.
Maybe reports.
A community report. I've got a mental health meeting coming up. I believe it's on the twenty second. Been going through a nice process with those folks up there, meeting a lot of new people and going through all the training and so forth on that day. Thank you.
Economic Development and report. So, Mr. Chair, thank you.
Both my meetings were actually canceled. Michigan Works was canceled and along with the substance use disorder.
Thank you, Mr. Wolf.
I have nothing this month.
And I have nothing to report. Thank you. Public comment. During way on Zoom, Andy. Make motion for adjournment.
The move is chair.
Second. All in favor? Thank you.